Let me call this meeting of the Wausau County Council of Orks. Would please stand with invitation and please remain standing for the faith's allegiance. My God, we thank you for this day and the glory and the joy of your universe that you've created. And we thank you for the opportunity we have to serve our fellow man, the citizens of Wausau. We ask tonight, Lord, that every deliberation in every issue that we deal with, that we do those things in the best interest. We need the wisdom of many heads to prevail tonight and help us to do those things. It's pleasing to you in our lives. We will thank you for it. You worship the glory. Amen.
Amen. Attention, salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I just spoke to Mr. Park and Ms. Golf. I was going to be really put Judy's sister's mom to Quayle and they're not expecting a good outcome. And she made figure tonight. She said that we could call her if we need to and she would respond if we need to. I want to note that unless we have a tie vote or something, we will need to do that. If she's involved with that, that's the kind of stuff. All right, you have your miniature book or agenda for tonight. Is there anything on the consent agenda that you would like to pull from the agenda or discuss further? If an auditorium had a motion to accept the consent agenda?
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion as our second?
Our second.
Have a motion as second and discussion on the motion. Mr. Park, had he voted?
Yes.
Mr. Heinberg?
Yes.
Isn't she voting yes? All right. Core contract for construction services for M-0106 and M-0109. Project is presented by Jack Huston, or he's an engineer. Mr. Huston, if you'll please come on and tell us all the good news and be as lively as you can with the bad news.
All right, sir. Thanks, Mr. Mayor, the council members, I appreciate it. I'm Jack Huston from Southeastern Consulting Engineers. We're out of Weewill. We're working with DAG Architects on this project there all over the state of Florida and Georgia as well. Very good architectural firm. And Fred Fox on this grant here for the grant side of it. If I may, Mr. Mayor, I can approach and give you the...
Can everybody here, we don't have a piecing around microphone, just speak plainly?
Yes, sir, I will.
Yes, sir.
All right, so this project consists of a new building and associated parking with new infrastructure, including ADA parking spaces, set system, and the site work. We're going to coin this as the Wausau Community Center. As long as that's okay with y'all, we'll talk about it in here just a little bit. The grant funding is sourced from CDBG coronavirus funds. And it is for a new community center that will also act as a local health department and for vaccinations should this need ever arise for the grant purposes. After many conversations with Ms. Lynn, it seems as though the town is in need of a library. So what we've done is we've tried to incorporate the health department side of it, the community center side of it, and the library side of it so that we can meet all the grant requirements and best benefit the town. So in the early stages a couple of years ago, the original grant requested for us to use the existing building. We came over, did a site visit, and basically deemed the building probably more expensive to bring the building right here just across the street from us. More expensive than to build a brand new one. So that's where we were at with that. So it took a couple of years for all of this to transpire here. We've received approval from the state now. Everybody's signed off on everything so far. And now we're in a time crunch, of course, so to get this thing done. So if you'll look at your handouts, I've got, I'll kind of go through page by page. We'll skip to page three. So this is just showing the existing conditions of what's there now and a couple of labels there for the fire rescue, the town hall that we're in now, and the existing building that we're talking about today. Skip to page five and six. So these are, these are what I would give an architect a hard time about. I call them inspiration pages. That's what I told Ms. Lynn they were. So there's not really anything pertaining to your building in here. It's just what the architect's thought process was on what they would like for it to look like to some degree. So page seven is actually where we'll actually start. So left-hand side of the page, you've got the site plan, the preliminary site plan, and you've also got the floor plan. The floor plan consists, we're calling it a library for the main area. We've also called two rooms, a vaccination room. We have two restrooms with a moth closet there. And we also have a break room that Ms. Lynn has told us exactly what she wants in that break room, and she's got it in there. So we've got exactly like she wants it. So we've also got a little reception area off to the right-hand side. And you'll see in the pictures on the next couple of pages, double doors to enter. And we're actually going to enter off of Second Avenue. So we're going to meet next week with the Washington County Plan Department there regarding the setback tank. And that's how it's going through the EDP now. And also on the setbacks and what we have to do there. So with the new road, we're kind of in a tight spot. So we're going to sit with everyone, work with us on that. So we'll work through those items next week, and I'll send Ms. Lynn an update for y'all. The next page on page eight is your elevation. Do you have any questions on the floor plan? Any questions on that? I can go over that in more detail if you need me to. It's just there's, we've gone through a lot of iterations here. I've tried to keep it as simple as possible. That's the way I would want it, serving a good purpose, and we can keep it as simple as possible. On the next page, on page eight, you'll see the elevations for the building, north, south, east, and west. We've got a hip roof, galvanized metal, and hardy board siding. And you can see here in elevations, the entryway here is a little more defined, as you can see with the glass. So we're trying to make it a very nice entryway. And that, in the next couple of pages, you'll see that entryway is actually covered about three feet right there. So it'll, you'll see that here shortly. Any questions on the elevations? It's hardy board siding and galvanized roof. We've got a 12-foot plate height on there for you. Or 10-foot plate height on there for you. The next page is simply a section cut through here, showing where the walls are going to be. And some interior pictures there to kind of show you some interior renderings of what it could look like. Well, I know they're showing hardwood floors on here on the right-hand side of the page. We talked about doing the same type, forgive me, but I call them carpet squares. They're super easy to keep clean. If one gets stained, you get the extra ones and put it down there, and they work really good. It also helps on the sound. I was worried about the sound, and if you wanted to deem the library and people reading, I think the carpet would be a much better fit than the hardwoods. We've kind of, we've switched this from the hardwood to carpet now. On page 10, you'll see the rendering where it shows the actual building on the site. That's where we have the site placed at now. And the parking is off the alleyway, and the entrance is off Second Avenue. And we'll have some better pictures here on the next couple of pages. But we've tried to incorporate a planner right there with the library. We thought there might be some agricultural-type scenarios where some kids could do some ag projects. So use those planners as they can grow squash or they can grow flowers or whatever they want to there certain times of the year. So we thought that would be a good idea just to have here for you. And we have that added alternate in the bid there. And on page 11, you'll see a much more zoomed-in view of the renderings there. And on the right-hand side of the page, you'll notice that three-foot covered entryway there. Kind of serves a good purpose getting out the rain. But the hip roof will be the best for the wind load and the longevity of the building. And 10-foot plate height would be really nice inside. And you can see the planners there as well. I really like, I hope they get those planners in there. I really like that thing, that thing sets it off there. Page 12 is a really close-up view and renderings, and it's showing all the signage there. I think we, I'll get with Ms. Lynn on it later, but we've called it the Wausau Community Library. We may want to think about calling it the Wausau Community Center. I think it would be a better fit as long as y'all are good with that. But that's something I wanted to make sure we go over today. And on the bottom right-hand side of the page, you see the planners up close and the windows and all for it. We've tried to minimize everything, stay in the grant confines. There shouldn't be any issues. We're going to build this thing to a 140, 150 mile per hour building, and you shouldn't have any problems with it whatsoever.
Can I ask a quick...
Yes, sir.
You finish your presentation first.
Yes, sir, I'm good.
Just to talk about the changing of the name, if we wanted to house the library there, are people going to be thinking about coming to the center for birthday parties and all kinds of things? And just full of books and stuff like that?
I think what we talked about is leaving the books on, and we've kind of talked about that, Mr. Mayor. Basically, we want the books and the computers are going to be on rolling carts so they can all be pushed to the back or pushed to those vaccination rooms while something else is being used.
Very good.
Yes, sir. So we've tried to make sure we can get a dual use, a triple use out of this one building here.
Two book names on that side.
I'll ask Mr. Fred Fox about that. He's the one controlling the grant money. So of course, I'll ask him, and I'll have a better answer for you. But I want to make sure y'all are okay with just maybe not calling it the library. But because it's not library funding, it's coronavirus funding. It's a vaccination room is what this really is. So we're just trying to make the most of it for you based on your need.
We don't want to do anything jeopardizing, but...
Yeah, I know, sir.
They come looking for a library.
Leave that slide there for a year and then take it down, but whatever you want to. But yes, sir, that's pretty much all I had. As long as y'all are good with this, the colors and all, we don't have to stick with these colors. We started out with the architects. I'll tell you all a good story, but we started with architects, and they had a monoslope roof and parrot-foot walls. And so that, I'm from Weewall, so I know Weewill, that Weewall. So we got it down to, finally got them down to a normal, what I would call a normal-type structure that wouldn't cost a whole bunch of money. I mean, we were talking about CME block with the parrot-foot walls or waterproofing problems forever. So I'm just trying to minimize everything maintenance-wise for you guys on this building. But we'll need a vote to move forward. Like I said, we're going to meet with the county planner next week, and this will all happen fairly quickly. We've got about a two-month timeframe here to get these construction drawings done. So both DAG and our engineering will be going on simultaneously. So we'll put everything together at the very end and then be ready to bid this thing out.
In talking to Dawn, did she say we might be able to scale down on page 10 some of that, those trees and stuff? Or not, or we might have to have that vegetative enough for that big?
I will have a better answer for you. So we have a little bit of a setback problem. I've got the building centered now. It doesn't look centered on the rendering, but it's centered for what we have to work with. And it works out really good with our parking. So we're going to go through that with the planning board and the planning and the planner next week for you. So I'll have a better answer for you. But whatever that will be, on the landscape plan, I'll get with y'all. Most people like the, either a gym may know you is going to lose its leaves every year. It's going to, they're easy to rig, they are going to lose their leaves. River birch trees grow really fast. So if you do want to block that, we can put a river birch tree there. Something along those lines that, you know, will max whatever you want to there.
Because I think there's a chain link fence...
Yes, ma'am.
...that runs up the side of that house right there. So my thought is trees are going to grow over into the other yard and...
Cause a problem.
We may, and the route is there, we may have a better seat, so look for office CME sale.
Yes, sir, we were talking about putting a fence on the property line, on the new property line from the right-of-way taken.
Yeah.
We've talked about putting a fence up there. We're going to add that in the site plan, although I'm worried about that too.
So I, just considering the elevation, I noticed that, you know, this plan shows your elevation. Is there any consideration we need to make for the fact that the street's going to be above this elevation? Or do you expect the entire property to be at this elevation up to where the state is?
So we don't have, we just got our topo like a week ago.
Okay.
So as soon as we get the topo, we'll get the DOT plans from Chipley, and I'll match those elevations to what, we'll make sure it's not, no water will come in there, I promise you.
Yes, sir.
You're in an explosion, but we'll make sure that DOT should take care of their water. They don't like us putting our water on them, so we won't let them put their water on us, right? So, so yes, sir, we'll take care of that. But we're just, it's like I said, it's going to happen really quick. And we're literally just, I'll do the survey as soon as we got the go-ahead. So we got like a week or two ago. So it's just now getting started. And once we get this approval, we'll be rocking along pretty good.
Based on the work they're doing, I don't expect to get any water from them. I would just, didn't want any of this something to hold down the...
Yes, sir.
You know, from us. Because they're going to be up. Anyway, but thank you for that.
Yes, sir, we'll get the DOT plans for sure.
And I don't know, and again, I don't know if it's too late, and this might not be workable, but I noticed you have a property line here. Is that a real road in there? Is that a real road or is that just that we're using?
Again, I looked at the survey and see, I did not bring a copy of the survey with me because I was just waiting on to get this approval, then we can really start looking at the survey. But I will look, and I believe it's an alleyway. Because you do have the right to use it based on what we've seen on the survey so far. So we had, that's why we put our parking over here. It worked out really good to put the ADA spot in front and then all the remainder parking. And right now, our parking, normally we would use a 350 square foot for a commercial building per parking space. It's pretty normal in the Panhandle region. So we're down to like 312 square feet per, so we're better than a commercial building for parking. So we would expect some kids to be dropped off and some kids, their parents are going to stay with them, you know, parents, grandparents stay with them. So, but yes, sir, we've got more parking than a commercial building would have to have at this point right now.
So again, this is just a curiosity, and I get the speed, we may not be able to have this conversation. But I was just wondering if it might make sense to shorten it and maybe utilize, like have this whole thing of parking space out here? Where there's front end, where there nose in up to this building as well as nose in up to that building?
Oh, okay, so maybe like angled parking on this, on this side?
Yeah, shorter parking lot, right. I don't know, just...
Yes, sir, we can look at it.
I don't know about the grant.
Yeah, I don't know the grant, let's just go outside that boundary, but we'll certainly...
And again, I wouldn't want to raise the price at all. Just if it's same square footage, does that make sense?
Yes, sir, for sure.
It would really, for the future of our building, it would really be a nice thing to, like just, even like a nice square parking lot out there for both buildings, really.
And I'd have to look at the patio again because we've done some, but that may be a planted alley or a street. I know that we started on the other side of the church over there, across that, Mr. Lee Wood, and the parking we lost and closed.
Oh, that wasn't a planted alley. If it was planted alley, it would move on, right?
Yes, sir, I'm pretty sure it is.
But you may need to check, make sure some, we've closed some of these, and that may be, that may be already closed.
Yeah, I don't want it...
Yes, sir, our surveyer tied in all, he's got us all the flat books, all the flat blocks on there from the flat book. And also he tied it in right back over here about two blocks down. So we got like these two, three blocks here.
I think we went across Mr. Park's property, even your dad's property, when he was living out in the town. That time, that's a long time ago. It bears to be checked.
So based on these drawings, do you have a specific list of decisions we need to make tonight? I noticed you have some options in the drawings, or is that just going to be a...
We just need an option to, for us to move forward. And then once we make the plan official next week, we'll be able to start nailing this thing down. I'll come back up here, show it to you, send it to everybody. I left my card there for you, so if you want to send me an email, I'll be happy to send it to you guys individually so you don't violate sunshine law, I sent it to Ms. Lynn. What I would like to probably do is probably, if I have all your email addresses, I'll just, what I normally do is send it to Ms. Lynn, and I'll blind copy all of y'all in one email, and then you'll just know not to respond back to it.
Busy, have our emails?
Yes, sir, I can get that easy.
Yeah, that'd be good.
I don't want to delay, but I'm curious, is there a, and maybe this is for the future, but I'd like to ask you so that we can have that conversation. And that is, is that vaulted ceiling a significant change in energy cost? I don't have that.
It is, yes, sir. I mean, everything, so we would plan to do pre-engineered trusses on the building. So if we have a six-on-12 on the outside of the roof, you're inside, the max it can be is going to be three-on-12. We lose three-on-12 for any vault that's sitting with a normal gable truss. So the maximum will be three-on-12. So that will be, and that's, I'm just not a fan of scissor trusses myself. They, we do a lot of engineering on structures, and I'm just not a fan of scissor trusses. If you want to do that, we could, we would definitely...
I've only thought about it because it was in here. I don't have it as a personal preference.
Yeah, we probably end up with a flat, flat ceiling. Yes, sir, with 10-foot, with 10-foot plate height, I don't see, it's going to feel very large in there. We could do a tray. My wife did trays in our house. I told her they're going to crack right here, right here, and right here, and that's where they're cracked.
Again, not a preference, I just noticed it as a visual option, but I agree with you.
That's a good thing that I didn't notice when we had to make adjustments and pitched tonight.
Yeah, this isn't the final plan, it's just for us, the actual size, and that's really about it, the size and maybe the finishes. You know, we can do colors and interior.
Sure.
Yes, sir, we can get that later. That's all I have.
Anybody on council have a question for Mr. Huston?
No, maybe.
You might in the audience? Okay. Did the chair would entertain a motion that we approve proceeding with the, which one? This is not preliminary, we just proceed?
The preliminary site plan.
Project, yeah.
Yes, sir.
We entertain a motion, did we proceed with the project? This is our rant, or we were going to do other things until we found out we couldn't? Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
We have, we have a motion to proceed, is there a second?
Our second.
We have a motion and a second and discussion on the motion. Mr. Heinberg?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Chairwoman, she is?
Yes.
All right, thank you all very much.
Please appreciate your time.
Yes, sir, no problem, thank you all very much. Yes, sir, thank you very much.
You want to hold off on the bins to my party? You want to hold off on the bins to my party, or do you want to do that?
Is he here for that as well?
I don't see, no.
That's not part of the...
John, I don't see.
Oh. I thought we just hold for you.
Okay.
Okay, all right. Right, on the agenda, we have, well, he's on the... Thank you, sir. Okay. We have, and Mr. Steve Hallmore. Sound like a familiar name.
Matter of fact, it's been two... How y'all doing? Last time I was here, I was actually resigning from the rec director last June 2023. And then I had a stroke in December, and they put everything. The rec has been dominant since I've resigned. I've had many people come up to me asking about it and everything. I've got a few people, Peggy Patrick and Leo, wants to start soccer back up this summer. I have agreed, you know, with them, with the council's permission, to oversee it. Peggy wants to learn how the recreation works and everything else. And what I like to see is bring soccer back. We got two fields, that's one of the things, we put the lights and everything up there on Rogers Park for soccer. And then we got the field down here. I would like to see soccer go, and then come January, start getting baseball and softball again because we need kids in here. We need to utilize that for the kids. And I know it's hard sometimes, but unless we try, we will never know. Even if we don't get many to make teams, we still can work with them and train them and play against each other. But last time we did it, well, the last two times we did it, we got a bunch of kids for soccer. And we played with Chipley, and we actually come in third out of seven in the tournament overall in Chipley. So I was very proud of the kids then. But what I need from y'all, the last time here, when I resigned, I still stayed volunteer rec director. But what I would like for y'all to vote to confirm that and to let me start the soccer program and see where it goes. Y'all just have to see a lot more of me, that's all. But that's what I'm here to ask and for your permission. And do anybody have any questions? Ms. Shirley?
I don't have any questions. I just don't know that our budget...
You're not paying me. It's all, I'm volunteer, there's no money. There's nothing, there's no, there's no money to pay me, I'm the acting free. But there is no money in the budget for the director because, but there's no money going to be coming to me. I'll be doing this as volunteer only, and it'll be on me to get it going and get the money up for the season.
What are the specifics of, like, you walk out of here tonight, what are the specifics that happen between now and children on the field? I know you can give me all the details, but give me a quick rundown.
Well, first, I get with Ms. Lynn, we'll do sign-ups. We'll put some yard signs around town. And then at the end of the sign-ups, we'll see how many children we got. We'll call them, they'll show up, and then we'll determine teams and how we're going to do everything. And if we do get teams, and I'll call Brock up there at Chipley and say, hey, I've got this age, this age, can you put us in the season? If not, we've got two fields to play.
What are the, what are the dates of their season? What's that?
I believe it was August, they started in August, and it was, I want to go, say we're practicing August, and we played in September and...
Okay, so it's not a June-July thing?
No, no. And you have a lot of kids around here that don't like football. And a lot of them would rather do soccer than football. And that's where we came in to get a lot of kids last time because football season's during the same time. And you had all these kids that don't like football, they came out for soccer. And then you had your kids for football. And it's like Chipley and Vernon does the football season. And, you know, the other kids, they came here for soccer. I mean, we had three teams, the last time we had, we had probably about 40 kids, three teams. We had a five, a seven-year-old. I believe we had, we had a 12 youth, and we had 10 youths. We had three teams. So the eight youths, we didn't, we only had like four kids. And two of them actually played with big kids, and they did pretty good. But then two kids, they didn't want to play with big kids. But there was only two kids. But I mean, it's really good, I mean, to be alive and see kids out there playing regardless. It's what, you know, it's what it's all about. But that's the process. We'll start, we'll get things, we'll start practicing probably mid-July, August, and then start playing end of August, September. And we'll be done before, I think we're done two or three weeks before Halloween, if I'm not mistaken.
I don't need to talk all the time, but Steve, I don't know about the history.
Oh, yeah.
They may have ideas about, okay, here are pitfalls. I don't...
Well, we had baseball and softball.
Right.
And then, like I said, kids did not want to play football.
Right.
So we started soccer program.
Yeah.
And then we had soccer program for two years, then I got sick. And then, and then everything went from down here. Now I'm at a better stage in my health where I can be out there and I can walk, you know, hobble around, but I can be out there with the kids and start getting them going. And I've got a help that wants to help me. She couldn't be here tonight because she had to change off to 5:30. But that was the difference between then and now. You know, so...
I don't think that probably anybody here or anybody in this room would not see the positives.
Oh, yeah, there's a lot of positives.
You don't have to sell us on positives. So you might understand that tonight we're going to be asking about negatives possible.
Well, I mean...
Just ask about the negative.
Right, well, not negative, but...
Negative thing, I think, I think the insurance cost is, I think $100.
Okay. Is that something that you would take care of?
Well, I would raise some money for it.
Okay.
I mean, the city have to buy it.
I get what you're saying.
I would raise some money for it. But I think, I think it was like $100 for the liability insurance for the kids. It's just like baseball and softball, you have the liability insurance to cover if there's accidents or anything else. But that's about the only negative.
Yeah.
Kids going to get hit in the head with a ball. I mean, they're going to cry.
Oh, they don't?
No, it's going to hospital.
Well, you said they're going to cry.
No, they're going to cry, believe me.
And so really, I guess the financial, that is kind of unspoken, which is something we should consider.
We will charge a small fee. We'll charge a small fee. What we did the last time is we charged a small fee. And we went on Amazon and got all the shorts. And we got all the shirts. And we found our parents with crickets. And we did all, and then we did the shirts. I mean, we actually did that, I don't even think, we even used the city's money. And we did all, and then we did the shirts. I mean, we, we actually did that, I don't even think we even used the city's money at all then. But we did it, and, you know, we were like the Cinderella, you know, soccer to everybody else. We had, everybody had all these fancy uniforms and everything. Hey, long as we show up and play, we show up and play. And we probably still got a hundred, hundred shoes in the, in the building over there, because people donated soccer and, uh, baseball shoes all year. So.
I'll back down. Don't let y'all talk about the things that.
No, you need to answer all the questions.
No, 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 I mean, I don't, can't think of anything else. I'll have to rely on this team to help me with the additions.
Ms. Shirley, do you have anything else, just?
No, that was just, that was my big thing.
Mr. Clark?
I don't have one.
The financial for this is gonna be cheap compared when we get to softball and baseball. And then we'll have to charge because we don't have a budget and get donations and everything. And believe me, I'm a good, I'm a good, I'm a good fundraiser, good donations. Y'all seen the past. And I know somebody's on, on the staff over there that's real good about raising money. I ain't gonna say Ms. Lynn, but she's good about that. She knows where everybody is. But, uh, but I need y'all's permission to, uh, get it going.
Just for your, certainly, Steve, when Steve was our, uh, recreation director, uh, not only did you come third place in the softball, in the baseball, we were like, played in a state tournament.
Oh, yeah, we won the state.
It's been, it's been a successful program.
Yeah.
Uh, I talked to somebody from Vernon, probably about three weeks ago now, and they was talking about how many teams they had and things like that. And I, not to be argumentative or anything, I didn't say yes. When your, when your recreation director left, he took all the names of our players with him and, and, uh, you know, recruited or whatever.
Oh, yeah.
Uh, I remember when Mr. John McCorver said to the county commissioners one time, the more we spend on our children like this, the less we'll have to spend on in the building next door. Which at that time was the county jail. So, uh, I think that, I think for us to do something for our children, which I almost challenge any of us to drive up and down the streets of Warsaw and find any children. We.
Yeah, they stay there playing video games.
Yeah, they're not, they're not in Warsaw. We don't have children anymore.
Well, we do have children that's playing video games.
Sir?
We do have children. They're inside playing video games.
Instead of being outside playing?
Yeah, we just have to ask parents to put them outside.
I still challenge you to find them.
Well, well, there's not that many.
Years old, and they ninety years old. I do live in the houses and that, and there ain't no youngins and blokes in Warsaw. Come out anything. They may be three or four, but that aside, I've always thought the Warsaw region's from Flat Creek to Greenhead and from One and Pond to Orange Hill. We, we'll.
Well, that's actually, that actually in baseball is my map. From Corbin Road to Orange Hill, all the way to Greenhead, all the way up to Bonafon Road. That's my map.
I understand. And we, we're a catchment for all those people, and if we can get something established, uh, we may not have the many this year's budget, and the men will say, you do not. But when we start into budgeting in July and August, we can put something in there, perhaps. I, I don't know what our revenues looks like for next year, but the budget season.
Well, as long as we can, as long as we can raise money and, uh, have fundraisers.
We had it in the budget, which you practically funded the budget fundraisers.
But, it's all you got here.
Let me talk. Parents, if parents is behind their children like they should be, and like they have been, uh, they won't have to, they won't have to do it. Uh, we may struggle another year or two, but we can get started. We had a director one time, and for throughout three years in a row, you wanted to buy complete uniforms and all that, the kids haven't had this and haven't had that. And, and, and I just shook with it. Well, now they don't have to have anything but a ball and a bat and a club. Uh, that's, that's essential, but it got better, and it can get better again. I'm, I'm like, uh, Mr. Phillips now, that's all I'll say tonight.
I, I do wanna, I've asked the questions about concerns. I do wanna say that, you know, I, I, I would be in total, in great agreement to, to get something going. And, uh, again, I just wanna move to the next thought of this, and that is, are we talking about, um, is it something that would be something that, let's just talk about the raw fundraising?
Okay.
Steve would have to give us money, or Steve's raised?
Well, we'll raise the money. It'll go in our budget. It'll go into our account.
Okay, and it would go into the city accounts, yeah. And, and so one thing that I just wanna kind of point out as we're looking at this, Steve, is that we've really, uh, been really trying to tighten up our budget work, uh, and expenditures, and we were, we kinda didn't, uh, have a lot of, um, hold on expenditures and, and receipts, and so we are a little bit tighter now, as far as I know. So that, there will be a little bit of change, and there'll be some getting used to that. I, I'm hoping, I don't want there to be any conflict as we go into this.
Well, what happens?
Somewhere, well, I can't get my money from the city.
No, if we have, no, believe me, I've never done that.
No, 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 I'm just saying it's different, and you're gonna feel different when you really get into it. You're gonna feel the difference.
I don't, I don't think I use that much of city's money.
No, wait, even once you raise, we're responsible for giving it back.
Well, what happens, as soon as I get the fundraiser over with, I'll come, Ms. Lynn, I'll hand her the checks and the cash.
Okay.
And then she'll deposit.
Okay.
And then when I need something and I buy it, either I have her or I'll buy it and give her the receipt to be reimbursed.
Okay.
Um, but it won't be, you know, I won't be holding on to buy this and that. Everything will be accountable for.
Okay.
I mean, that, it's like running a business, and I ran that concession stand, I ran that whole place like a business. You know, believe me, I got mad when I had to take a loss, but we always had a profit at the end of the year. And, uh, and that's the way everything should be, no matter what it is.
Will this be incorporated, you using the concession stand as a?
Well, during soccer, yes, it may be, but, uh, I do have, I do have petty cash that still belongs to the town. That's the record direction. I still have the bag and everything. So it won't be getting any money from y'all. We'll just go from that bag and go buy stuff and then replenish it. We won't have any, um, if we play with Chipley, we won't have any referees to pay out. But down here, I mean, I don't even think we use the concession stand at all during soccer because it was during the daylight and we was trying not to use the lights, and, uh, I don't think, I don't think we use any. Baseball and, uh, baseball and, uh, softball, it'd be every night.
Okay.
But soccer, I don't think we use it. Now, if we start playing here, now, yeah, we'll have to use it, but if we go to Chipley to play, we usually have to bring our own, because we usually don't have nothing else, but.
Thank you. I'm good.
Before, uh, is, is that not the same way we handled money before with the rec department? With fundraisers? Who you were here?
She wasn't here. Ms. Margaret was here.
This is new to her.
Yeah, I think that we did that before with, and I've had, and the petty cash, I don't remember about that, but.
Petty cash was for the, uh, concession stand.
As long as it don't go through our booths, I don't think we're responsible for it, but if it's just been a lot of petty cash, I'd like to.
Well, I tell you right now, it's three hundred dollars. It's three hundred dollars.
Okay.
And it's been like that since I first started.
Okay.
And that, and that, and that cash I still have, it's still in my safe. And it's ones and fives and twenties, and that's for the concession stand.
That's what we saw.
And that's what I end with and start with and everything. It's like once a month, when we did have the concession stand, Ms. Margaret got whatever was over three hundred dollars.
Yeah. Would our, would our liability insurance not cover this? Do we have to have a separate policy?
I think it was an add-on.
Yeah, it's an add-on for two players. Yeah, it was only, I think it was a hundred dollars. I have that since Margaret, but she knows the.
We would have gone record if it out.
Yeah. So I'm pretty sure Ms. Lynn can shop for us.
Any, any other questions for Steve?
I don't have any.
Okay. All right, chair entertain a motion. Do we, uh, do we reaffirm and allow Steve to, uh, resurrect our recreation program, beginning with the soccer sign-up as soon as possible?
I'll make a motion.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
No, same here.
That's a motion, that's second. Any discussion on the motion? How you vote for Phillips?
Yes.
Chairperson, she is?
Ms. Clark?
Yes.
Ryan Burke?
Yes.
Unumous, I can see.
And Ms., uh, Cawthor, I'll get with you Monday about the signup sheet and everything. Just make whatever you wanna make, and then I'll put some down there, GGS.
Okay.
And, uh, we'll start getting the yard signs and advertising.
As far as, as far as saying like food and all like that, do we have, uh, any kind of inventory? Could Philip take a look and?
He can look, yeah.
Take a look and see what he thinks about it. You, you know Philip, our new maintenance?
I've seen him before.
Well, introduce yourself to him.
Okay, I will. I'll catch you Monday. Uh, we still got the soccer, we're supposed to have the stalker stuff still in there, the nets and stuff to practice with.
Yeah.
But if we start playing here, I know someone's, uh, brother-in-law's a good builder, and, uh, get some PPC piping and build our, because I think they're like sixteen, fifteen, sixteen feet wide. But that's how all the Chipleys got, they built it out of PPC piping and netting. I know it didn't cost much.
Okay.
But, all right, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Steve. Y'all have a blessed time.
All right, and one thing we need to consider, if it's successful, and we need to keep the rec program in Warsaw, we, we will need to look at budgeting at that. That stops a lot of good programs. Okay, all right. Anyone else want to see the audits at that one, the city board has not signed in yet? All right, let's, let's move on, on agenda. Audience, uh, Matt Burke?
Do you wanna drop down to the, um, Boston Met fundraiser, in case Michael won't stay or can't, we don't wanna stay the whole time?
You have a plan?
Yep.
Michael, you chief?
Yes, sir. And I'm hoping I did this right. Uh, it, it, I, I've, my understanding is that the fire department wanted to do with any fundraising on, we need to bring it up to y'all first. Um, we're discussing, we've had a lot of people come to us and go, when you cooking again? When you cooking again? So we've decided, um, we've got a plan, I think it was to do its whole Boston Butts. Um, we'll be cooking them with permission, as long as you're agreeing to it. Um, we'll be cooking them on July twenty-sixth, it's a Saturday. Um, we're wanting to do it as a pre-sale. That way, we're not putting any of our funds in it. Um, and it'll be a limited cooking. It'll be the first fifty people to buy the tickets. We'll be selling tickets for forty dollars a piece. It's not gonna be, honestly, it's not gonna make a lot of money, but it's gonna bring the community together again.
Yep.
And remind of, remind them how well we can still cook.
All right, any questions from the council?
So I just wanna make sure, just from, again, from that whole accounting thing, that when you sell the tickets, to me, the expectation would be that the money would be given to the city and town, and then the town would give you the check or whatever you needed to buy.
Yes.
Whatever, I'm not gonna specify that process, but.
Yes, it's gonna be, all the money will be turned in the land, because we'll take, of course, checks and cash, whichever, and.
Right, you'll turn it.
I believe it adds up to, I believe, two thousand dollars.
Yep.
So hopefully, we'll be giving her two thousand dollars pretty soon, because I, I know I've already got five people already told me they want tickets. Uh, so I gotta wait, I gotta get permission before I can sell the ticket. But, yeah, um, we'll get all the money to her, then we'll be picking up the meat and sides, and be able to get a check from her or card, but however, to where we purchase the stuff.
Two thousand dollars would have to be.
Honestly, it depends on the meat prices right now.
Yeah.
It's, unfortunately, they're not staying like they used to be.
Know that word.
Boston Butts costs a little more. That's why we actually went up just a tiny bit.
Do you want to get them from Tates?
Yes, ma'am. Tates has always been reliable in supplying the meat. It's good quality meat and the best price, honestly.
Yeah.
We've tried Brickyard before, and they've matched Tates' price, and then not quite had enough available. So.
Is the money issue better? Everything's good now about money coming in and money going out, things like that.
It is. My question.
I appreciate you, I appreciate you or whoever helped to do that, all of you, to help, to help. I hate to use the word straighten that out, but help us to.
Stop the confusion?
Reconcile that. I appreciate that.
We're trying. We're, uh, we're doing what we can. We.
Yeah, yeah.
I think my, my question is, so the whole issue's out there going into the county? And so what's this volunteer money supposed to be used for? Are we, what's gonna happen to it after that we become a county department? What, where does the money go?
I'm not a hundred percent on that. Honestly. I, I hate to say this.
I'll tell you what I think. And you, and you have a, I think whether it was coming into the city court, just like it is now, we won't be, I don't think we'll be a part of the city before the new year. So anything that needs between now and the new budget year, it would be used for that like it always has been. And then any money that's left in there will, whatever happens in any of the minute happened in there, it would happen whatever they add.
Yes.
So if we do this on the twenty-sixth, and we wind up knowing how much we got, we'll put that in their budget. If they have to have tires before down the end of the year, before we, before we become part of the county, if we do, assuming that we did before we become a part of the county, we'll spend that money for anything that the fire department needs, just like we, we, we weren't anticipating below. That's what I think.
Yeah, now, I would have to say that even if we do, even if that anniversary does somehow happen faster, which I agree with you, it may probably won't because of the budgetary issues. Um, we still have the discrepancy to spend money and help the people buy supplies over there, right?
Yeah.
From our, from our budget. It would be, it would always be allocated to something to do with fireworks.
Honestly, we're just doing this because the community's been asking, hey, when you doing it, when you? Well, we wanna, we wanna make sure the community still knows we're, we're trying to do everything we can.
And that, and that's something that I'm thinking about, and we didn't mention this to Jason when he was here. Justin, I know I called him Jason, but we didn't mention this to him. But, but the fire department, to be part of the community and all that, there's two things that I look forward to from the fire department for years. That's fish fry in the spring and, like, sailing the.
Unfortunately, our fish supplier, um, is not available anymore, and we've been trying to figure out a way to get fish again.
Yeah.
But we haven't been able to get fish from them anymore. That's the only reason that has not happened.
Yeah, I understand. But, but one thing is that, uh, we didn't ask, uh, Justin or, or, uh, Mr. Massey or, or anybody, and I don't even think we mentioned it to Jael. I'd like to see the fire department not be curtailed from doing some things like that.
Actually.
They, I don't know what their leadership plan is about them raising money. If they raise money as a fire department and stays with them, that's still the same, but, uh, what if we, what if we would have a fundraiser? What if we would have a fundraiser for the, for the recreation department, and we want the fire department to do the cooking and all for us? Is that gonna be something we can do?
From my understanding, because I've actually asked this question, because, I, I'm sorry. Us doing these fundraisers and stuff, that's something that the department's always done for years, long before I was ever there.
Yeah.
Um, I've been told we can still continue doing that. They are not gonna micromanage the department. Um, we will still be able to do our stuff as we've done in the past, and I'm guessing Al's had that same, they haven't changed your stuff like that, have they?
Well, I was never able to do fundraisers. The county said it was bad on them for us to be out with the fundraisers. It makes it look like county's not giving us enough money. The lures are trying to add money.
Yeah, it's.
But they didn't want students.
Now, I've been told there will not be any issues with us doing it, because also we've got the street fest. And I have no clue how quick this is gonna take place, how long it's gonna take, and I made a comment. We've got that street fest.
Yeah.
It's been planned. We've already got vendors and everything else. And they're like, oh, yeah, that's no problem. You continue doing that.
Is it, is it all right with the council if I talk to, uh, Justin or Jael or, or our Jael or some seat? That's, that's not something we've already handed to them, so we start changing the negotiations. We don't want to, we don't want to file something new, but, uh, the fire department, the personnel at the fire department is part of the community, and, and, uh, I'd like to see them be permitted, uh, to take part in the community activities.
I have been told that will be allowed.
What I think the, what I think the route will be, what happens to the money, if they could do lots of things, is, uh, the recreation department, the, uh, whatever else we got, libraries and, or they're gonna get the money, or we'll have to go to the county, and, and I think that might be the route.
One thing I actually asked about that, and what they've done for, I don't know if they did it for Sunny Hills, but I know they did it for Orange Hill and Greenhead. They, um, they set up, uh, they helped set up a five-oh-one, the non-for-profit. I, I'm sorry, I don't remember the number. Um, and they do it as the friends of that department, and you end up having to have a board and all, and take care of that, which the board for us would be the officers. And when we change officers, we board.
And all the area of the fire department.
But, yeah, it'll, and all fundraising funds and stuff like that would go to the nonprofit, not to the county. The county would not have anything to do with that money.
And one thing, I, I don't think it'd be a problem at all if, if they wanted to raise funds for the rec department or.
Yeah.
I keep talking about something like that. The fire, I don't think county had a problem at all with that.
Yeah, from the way I've talked to Justin and all, it, yeah, that's fine if we wanna do that, and I would have to ask the department, but I'm sure they'd be. I would have to answer the department, but I'm sure they'd be glad to help out.
Basically, I don't think they'd want to do that buying stuff, selling, hoping to make a profit kind of deal out of us.
Yeah, I think what we do from now till September 30th, or whatever date in the future, if we become part of the county, that we do become part of the county, I think we'll run our fire department just like it's always.
I, until they tell me otherwise, I'm reporting to you, and we're doing things like.
That, that's what should be.
Yeah. Now, I've asked questions of what's gonna happen afterward, but until then.
None of us can answer those questions tonight.
Sir?
Yep, none of us can answer all those questions.
Correct, I just trying to get some ideas, but until then, I go with the way we've always done it, or the way we're supposed to do it.
I think that's about it. Okay, anybody else have a question for chief? What's the, what's the position of the council?
So you gotta talk to jail before you.
I don't, I don't think they're asking for permission to have a Boston Butts sale, and, and they're looking at us to give them permission or deny.
I'll make a motion that we approve this request from the fire department.
Alright.
Yeah, I'll second it.
We have a motion, and second any discussion on the motion? Sure, who she is, Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Rattler?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
I appreciate it, you know, if any of y'all want some votes, if you'll get with us after Monday, we'll have tickets ready.
They have tickets ready Monday?
I'll have tickets ready by Monday evening, we got our meeting.
Okay.
We'll have tickets to where we can pass out to everybody and.
Somebody lose me a.
Thanks, Cam.
You're welcome, thank you. Do you have anything else for me?
Anybody have anything for the fire department, bridge minutes and everything is good, okay, thanks, sir.
I'm gonna go spend some time with my wife.
Good, good. Alright, Ms. Neddy, we're back to you.
At the very back of the clerk tab is, um, the bid tag allowances for M-0106 and M-0109. I put the bids on there, and I also put the grant award amounts on the bottom. So, um, one of the projects came in under budget, one of the projects came in over budget.
Just the one sheet here?
It should be very, it's very back of the clerk.
Okay.
Um, and so Fred is, is going, Fred Fox is going back to a lot of commerce to see if we can use the money that was over on one project to supplement, I mean, the one that was under on one project to supplement the one that was over. And so he thinks we'll be able to do that to get this, uh, the potable water and the Second Avenue project funded. And so what we need tonight is a motion to accept these, let me see, it was, um, Donald Smith Company was on the M-0106, the low bidder, and, oh, I got two Donald Smiths, how do I do that? Sorry, messed up.
Does the drainage in M-0109?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, and then GCU C was a low bidder on the other project, to accept those, um, to award those bids to those contingent on the award amounts, being able to be funded by the project, um, either through additional money or value engineer to meet the budgeted amounts.
Okay, so we come in under budget with the, uh, with the, uh, Second Avenue drainage, and we're about 60,000 over budget with the potable water.
Right.
And we just moved that 60,000 over and, and make up the difference.
Right, so that neither one of the projects would go over the grant award amount, we don't have any money to put with it, so, uh, we would award these bids contingent on us being able to get them down into the grant award amounts, or for the engineers to value engineer, we try to get them to the grant amounts, but they won't, neither one of them will go over at all.
Got a calculator, how much, fill them in.
I don't have a calculator. 44,000, we would have leftover on the, um, Second Avenue drainage, we have 44,000 left over. About 60,000 over on the other one. So we're gonna try to move the 44,000 to try to meet the $60,000 deficit, and then we'll value engineer the rest of the money down.
That's about $10,000.
Yeah. Well, there were some, some things that are like, he was telling me he'd put in $100,000 for the generator, that we don't anticipate the generator's gonna cost $100,000, so I think they patented it enough where we're, by, by getting that money into that one, we'll be able to cover and value engineer down the rest.
So the motion would be that we, that we approve both of these low bids, contingent upon him working with the, uh, with our grant source.
Yep, to get both of these to meet the grant funding.
Any questions for the clerk? Sure, you want to take a motion to approve or not approve?
I can make that motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve contingent upon the, uh, the funding being made, okay, is there a second?
No, second.
We have a motion, we have a motion in two seconds, alright.
Yeah.
Any discussion on the motion? Hey, who's, or, yes, Mr. Rattler?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
And sure, who she is?
Um, the project updates are in here, basically that's what's happening on 106 and 109, um, 138. Let me see what's going on with that. Um, Deverie's still working on the plans and specs, and they expect them to be about 80% by the end of this month. And the COVID project, Mr. Hudson gave us that data on that, the Jefferson and Jackson Street projects, we contacted Robertson Roberts, they were not able to value engineer that at all, they won't come off their price. But, um, so Jonathan went back to the DOT, and the DOT has sent an email saying that they will have some more funding available July 1st, and they will be able to fund, finish funding the project for us, and so Robertson Roberts has agreed to hold their bid until July 1st. So we received, we did receive an email from them saying that they would hold the bid, and we got one from DOT saying that the funding should be available July 1st.
And we're working on an extension?
Yes, um, they, we applied for extensions on both of these projects.
Okay.
So they're up to DOT, we spoke to her, there doesn't seem to be any problem with getting them.
To lose anyone, I imagine. No, well, and if it's July 1st, the extension's 6:30, so.
Yeah, uh, nothing's happened on the Possum Palace, um, grant, I'm still waiting on them to hear back if we can add funding to that. The Rogers Park and the Rogers Square, the Town Park, of course, we selected the grant administrator in Deverie, and we're working on getting those contracts signed, so that's what's happening on those.
Do you see anything concerning the public, concerning that, or on the schedules or anything?
No, we've been good about keeping up to date and filing for extensions when we need, when we need them. The budget status, I did not get the colored one done, it's been too crazy for me to get it done, but I did want you to see, under the financial tab, I did show you the reconciliations for all the accounts, so the very last page, we did for you our non-potable water sales, and so from January to May, uh, we billed for $5,474.70, and we received almost all that money. Just for June of 2025, we're already at $5,500, just for this month.
Wow.
So, um, the water sales, non-potable water sales were going great.
A little recognition. Yeah, that's right, that was unanticipated revenue.
It is.
Put that in contingency fund and make up something between now and, well.
One of the things.
And then we won't have to make up, uh, a lot of, some more revenues and.
You got plenty of stuff like that, what you just said.
Well, what, um, I'm waiting on a, a quote for a laptop, it's a tablet, I think it is, for Philip to be able to actually go up in GPS all of our water meters, our, um, valves and all that kind of stuff. We have the program, we've had it here for a long time, nobody's ever used it, and so Roy Water came over and showed him his laptop, and he's in love now.
He's been trying to do it on his phone, but it just.
It won't work.
Holding up a little tiny phone.
We've identified a lot of this stuff, but he needs the laptop, so it's, it's gonna be about 2,500, but I'm waiting on the bid to come be off of it. Also, we've got about, when we counted, 13 meters in the ci, in the town that are reading crazy amounts of water. Joe got a bill for 4, $4,500.
I immediately didn't pay it.
It's some of the older meters, which the guy from the master meter said those things are only good for about 10 years, and for the batteries dying, you can't put new batteries, so I've got on order about 13 meters that we've identified, it's gonna be about $3,000. So.
We'll figure out when you use it.
The money is kind of at a really good time, but, you know, I'm hoping this summer we can just continue to, to, um, collect for the, the water usage.
Yeah, that's.
Get some stuff that we need to get done, so.
And if you got a bill for 6,000.
Yeah, also on the, um, and it's crazy where they are, it's like, it's all different points on the water system. It's not like this section's going out and that section, it's like random.
Yeah. Probably, probably going out on the same order.
Did it get more meters need be replaced?
It's just the readers, uh, the readers, the battery runs out on it, and then they, some of, they're reading in the negative right now. Some are reading in the negative, some are reading 50, 60,000 gallons of water.
Just the mechanical part needs a meter replaced.
Yeah, yeah, just the mechanical, for 13 of them, it's a little over $3,000.
It's just a little insert, the brass thing is there, you just put a new.
Yeah, um, the other thing is that, um, I haven't here record, well, it's going on down, but, uh, I'll skip to that, but I'm doing, I did call Heather Wells, I called around to several different places, heard about audit from last year, it's time for the new one. I contacted a couple of people, the cheapest one is Car, I mean, is Grimsley and Associates, but they, and I put a letter in here that they had sent, that said they will only, I think I did, only do the audit if we have cleaned up our books, so, um.
What does that mean?
Yeah, that's right behind the Dollar General thing, um, so he basically says, you know, if we will get the books cleaned up, that they will agree to do it, it's for 16,000, which is the cheapest we can find, so I did contact Heather Wells, and she came last week and worked with me for about four hours, and we got a little bit done. Um, today she came for seven hours, so, um, I did not come to the council prior, 'cause I did not think it was gonna take this long, but she's having to go back as far as 2008 to try to get the books cleaned up a little bit for us, um, so it's gonna be good once we get them done, and, um, we'll be ready to go into the 2024 audit, with hopefully very few audit, um, exceptions. So, um, if it gets to where it's gonna take much longer than what we think, I'll come back to the council and see if we can pay, see if, you know, if the bill's gonna be large, I'll come back to the council.
I guess, I guess my question was kind of the comment I made before the meeting started, uh, if we had to go back to 2008, and we turn in the budget every year, the state's not turning back on every year, but there's something wrong, there's something wrong. And if we paid the other company all these years, 30 years, 25 years, what it was, and we're gonna bad audits for about 17 years, they will hush and they back. We're having to pay somebody to come in now and do what should have been done all, all those long years.
And I, I think, I could tell the town used Carr rigs in Ingram for a long time.
Oh, long.
And, um, it seems, it only changed, I guess, when it went to Grimsley, I, I don't know why, but they made a lot of calls to me about different stuff, so, um.
We always had those audits like separation of duties and something like that, we never had anything that was financially wrong, we was warned if you keep on this track, you'll get in financial distress or whatever, that terms that usually, but we never had, and we may not now, I don't know what you're looking at, we, we never had missing budgets, we never had violations of things and all that thing.
There's no missing money.
I don't know what we're cleaning.
It, well, basically, it's just things have been put to the wrong account, um, there were some checks, several checks from 2008 that were never cashed for some reason, there was a whole page and a half of checks that are still sitting, or showing in the bank, that were written but were never cashed, and some of them were council members, some of them were, the maintenance guys' paychecks, I'm sure he cashed his checks, um.
Check that out, if one of them's mine, stop paying, stop paying.
No, no, any issue. I thought you were gonna cash the second.
So I think we're gonna be good.
So do we have to do a thing on that audit, or you're just alerting us, that's already a budget item?
Uh, yeah, just alerting that, you know, uh, I, I will need, this is 16,500, I will need, I think, a motion of the council to hire Grimsley to do the audit.
And in your solicitation, they were the cheapest, they were the least expensive, okay. Austin, pleasure to council, we have to have an audit.
I'll make a move, then we go ahead with it.
We have a motion to engage, uh, Grimsley and Associates for 16,500 dollars to, uh, do the 23, 24 audit. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion on the motion? Hey, who's, Mr. Rattler?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Sure who she is? Clark?
Yes.
Okay, oh, the next thing is, if y'all remember, last month we had the application for the wine, or what was package sales for the Dollar General. I called the lady that had actually filed the application, and she told me that this was actually for wine sales at the Dollar General. They were already selling, um, beer and tobacco, which is the items that were checked on the application. However, now we, we've learned that they did not file an application, that we think this is probably the initial application for beer and tobacco that wasn't done at the beginning. So, um, I did speak to Jeff, I think Mr. Hagan knows more about it, I did speak to Jeff today, and he said that since the, the county ordinances would, would apply to this, the county ordinance would apply to this more than this, anything to do with the town, and that, um, if building and planning, so that they met all the county ordinances, he would suggest we just continue to, I mean, that we approve it. Now, you found out more about it?
I talked to Ms. McDonald today, and, uh, there seem to be, there seem to be several discrepancies, and if I'm wrong, and that's the rest of the council, uh, you, you may not have been taken office yesterday, you just took office in January, so Mr. Phillips may not have, but when we were being accorded to change the land use, and all that, uh, somebody came here and we talked to them, and then the thing went through the planning commission, and I reminded Ms. McDonald, my, my memory said that when we, we, the only reservations we had, one of the reservations we had was there wouldn't be any alcoholic beverage sales there, and somebody from the company said to us, they didn't see that as being a problem, they had other stores that didn't have alcoholic beverage sales. I don't know of them, but that's, that's what we were told. Uh, from day one almost, they were selling alcoholic beverages, it's not consumption on premise, it's, uh, it's package sales. Uh, I've got a copy of the county's ordinance here, she'll be giving a copy of the county's ordinance here, and this only addresses, um, uh, mostly addresses consumption on premise. She looked over her application, she said that she remembers that conversation also, about no alcoholic beverage sales, she remembers that conversation also, so she went back and looked at the original application, and then used things like that, and, and didn't find, no, she, we had just a few minutes, so she may find it later, I'm, I'm not pinning anything on, on anybody, I'm just, uh, So she did say that, uh, this being cited on that, that she's also had applications for pool hall, uh, lounge and some other consumption on premises type things. And if we don't have an ordinance and we don't want those kinds of things inside the city limits, we need to, we need to get one. So that's something, whatever happens with this tonight, that's something else we need to consider is to pull them off, we need those things, uh, to come to Warsaw. But I think, I would recommend that we, that we table this again until Jeff can talk to us and maybe even have Ms. Mc, Ms. McDonald, excuse me, Ms. McDonald to talk to us and we, we have an understanding. If we, if we didn't do something or if we misunderstood something and this is here, it's here, that's, that's on those or, um, whatever. But if it's something that, uh, we, we're not all hearing the same thing, uh, we, we need to have it straightened out there before we sign it.
Well, we both know, are we gonna vote whether Dollar General's gonna sell beer and wine and this?
Yes, sir.
Well, and.
And tobacco. And they don't have.
And tobacco.
Yeah, they don't have, um, uh. Your question was, if we're gonna.
Well, uh, see, I was, you know, M&amp;M's already did it, Tom Thum's already did it.
And the history behind that is, we had an ordinance that prevented sales of alcohol in Warsaw for years and years, probably about 25 to 30 years ago. We had an attorney who was no longer with us and matter of fact deceased. And, uh, so when Tom Thum started to build, they, we didn't have planning in zone back then, so they built, they started selling beer. And, uh, I asked the attorney that night, uh, about that being a violation of our ordinance and he says, well, the statute that our ordinance was, was built on has been, uh, annulled or changed or something like that and our, and our ordinance wasn't any more good. We had an alcoholic beverage sales ordinance in Warsaw and it went away and we were not warned about it, not told about it, so, uh, so that's how these happen. So now since we got comprehensive planning and all that stuff, their grandfather deemed it. But any, anything else that comes in now has to go through all the process, uh, and this may have failed through, they may have thought they'd gone through the process and things like that, but, uh, uh, Ms. McDonald can't find a record of it if it, if it did. And I asked her, could I say that she said this, so I'm not, again, I'm not shifting burdens or anything like that, if we, uh, if, if, did y'all hear, did y'all hear them say that when they came here, that they, they didn't have a problem with it not being a, a alcoholic beverage?
It'll be on the tape if you have the date of the meeting.
Yeah, I don't recall that.
You don't recall that?
I do.
And, yeah.
I'm pretty certain that I do.
And, and maybe Lynn and I heard it or, uh, maybe even Martha when this, when this first began to move and it could've been a fun thing. I just, I just know that it was said to us by somebody from Paramore or whoever was here to get the permits and things like that. And I'm told today that there's, uh, the same thing is going on out at, at the New Orange Hill. Y'all know that's been in the news here lately, a lot's about. And I'm told today that they, they looked at that application and it looks like ours may be, might going on. And to address the tobacco thing, I'm, I'm no less fan of tobacco than I am of alcoholic beverages. And if you use alcoholic beverages, if you use supplies and use at home, that's, that's all you do. But, but I can tell you it's the personnel manager, a cigar or a pipe or cigarettes, never kept an employee from shoring up on Monday morning. As far as I know, the highway patrol never looked up a fatal accident and charged it to cigarettes and chewing tobacco. But alcohol, alcohol is a bad, bad thing. And, uh, I got grandchildren, I got great grandchildren, grandchildren grown, I got grandchildren, or great grandchildren going up here that, that, uh, I'd like to protect her. And if they're gonna use it, they'll go run it in here, Tom Thum and buy it anyway. I, I, I know that's, that's the.
The other thing Jeff was confused about was that why the city, why they had asked the town to sign off on it? Cause the letter from her says, it's applicable area on page four. When you go to page four, it talks about the zoning to be completed by zoning authority governing your business. Isn't that the county?
That is, and she said today, she went, why it did not come through. Actually now, they got a letter, let me be, let me be completely transparent, actually they got a letter that, that I signed, and you remember the letter we sent to them, it said that we had taken it until we could get some.
Yeah.
Some folks, so, so they got a letter and filed up there that I said, we're, we're still reconsidering this, we're still looking at it. So, so we go here, did I sign the letter? We did that for our last meeting.
On page four, and then the other, the sales tax be completed by the Department of Revenue and the Health Department. So Jeff was confused why this even came to the town. This really should've been, oh, have been handled by the county.
When I was county administrator, this again was also before zoning, some of us before zoning, planning is zoning and before comprehensive planning, uh, we had about a two-page application came from, I think the Department of Revenue or Alcohol, Tobacco and Fire, whoever it came from, and had two questions on there. Does this address, or does this location meet with planning is on, because we didn't have any, we didn't have any. And we had an ordinance on, uh, consumption on premises. So it depended on if they was, if they was asking for a package store and it was out here in the rural anymore like yet, it was automatically, I've, I've signed up, I've signed a number of those things where they could get their license and all that. Consumption on premises, uh, we was a dry county back then, they, they couldn't sell liquor anyway. The city actually had its own ordinance and Pizza Hood may have been the first, I'm not sure I'm right on that, but Pizza Hood was probably the first one that came there and began to sell beer inside the city limits because they had a different ordinance than we did. I don't know of any other, or don't remember maybe what order that anybody else came that were even buy beer there. I know you can't have it, uh, 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 our new place up there, Bevo Brady's, but that's also inside the city limits. So the only thing this election changed a couple of years ago was the sale of our liquor. We used to be a dry county, now we're a wet county, which means you can sell more than a beer and things like that. So. You know, everybody's opinion, we, we talk about everybody's opinion now, uh, or, or what you think we can do or what we can do.
I'd just like to briefly speak in favor of your idea of, we need to get some, there's obviously some clarity that has to be brought to the table. And I, I, I'd really love to know if we even need to vote. Uh, and then if we do, what, what do we, what do we determine our vote on, what legal document? So I agree and open and maybe between Jeff and, and if you feel like also, uh, Ms. McDonald.
And I would agree strongly with you and with, uh, the quarter that I, I don't know that I think this come back, comes back to us until it goes through the bill.
Sure.
Everything else has to go through the planning commission first and then come to us. And if we don't approve it, the table, but, uh. Mr. Porlock, do you have a suggestion?
Well, it's good, are you saying it's gotta get through the county first and then come to us or how does it work? All we might.
I'm probably saying I don't know for sure. I'm probably saying there's about three things here that, that now confuse us.
We might need the table to this and talk to Jeff and decide the next meeting.
That's right, Ridenberg?
I agree. Does the city get some sort of, like a percentage of tax sales from alcohol and tobacco?
They do.
Here in the city limits?
They do. We can case them. We get that whether we got a, a, a beer orders or not. Every county in the state gets a portion of alcoholic beverage sales taxes and they also get a portion of every, uh, of, uh, paributal bin. We don't have a horse race track up here, but we get revenue from them. Jackson County don't have a dog track, we do, but they get revenue. All 60, 70 counties gives revenue from alcoholic beverage sales, home license and, uh, uh, whatever I just said, paributal. So, so if we don't sell or do sell, we still get, we still get the tax off of it.
Now, I know this isn't anything to do with the Dollar General, but I don't recall M&amp;M coming through us for being able to sell tobacco and alcohol either.
She mentioned that today and I, I don't either, other than if they already had an existing license, they just reopened the building. I don't, I don't know what that is, but we didn't have it until after period. And, and, and she said they did not go through the planning commission either. And I didn't, uh, I missed some meetings, but, uh, it did come through a planning commission meeting that I was at.
So you would have Jeff and the, somebody from planning come at the next meeting? What y'all want me to do?
Whatever clarification we need.
Jeff's gonna be here anyway.
Yeah, okay.
If he thinks McDonald or if he can get a good answer.
Yeah.
You just give clarity, I feel like I'm more clarity.
And, 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 uh, if it's, if that's what, if that's what it is, Jeff, I'll, we'll sign it, just like we would, if we understood.
Okay. I can do that. The last thing I had is, um, the, the county and the chairman of the MSBU from Sunny Hills came up a week or so ago and looked at the old fire hydrants that we have out back that they pulled up from the Highway 77 project. There's about 10 of them back there right now, I think there's about four or five more that will be pulled up. And they wanted to see if the town would be interested in declaring them surplus and then either giving or selling them to Washington County and then their plans then to put them down in Sunny Hills and some of the new developments. Of course, I told them I'd be glad to ask you to declare them surplus so I could sell them to them, but whatever y'all want to do.
If they leave it out there, we gotta mow around and walk around and fall over them and then there's nothing refurbishing, bring them back there. I think, I think if we can declare them surplus, somebody else can use them, that's a good thing to do. And I'm not even opposed to giving them to them because they gonna have some expenses in there.
Giving them?
I know.
I do not give stuff away.
I can see, I can see it as a three to one. I said to them, I said, yeah, I'm not opposed to sending them either, but I think if they can be used, we need to recycle them. Somebody have a thought on that? Anybody in the council have a thought on that?
I think if anything, surplus them and sell them.
Okay, is that a motion?
Yes.
We have a motion, if we surplus and sell them, do we need to set a price for them? Negotiate, you'd be better than just setting a price.
We better believe it.
Do we, you, you was by department, do we negotiate or?
Yeah, I would just say leave it up to, yeah, negotiate, allow negotiation. I, I, I would have no idea how to set a price.
And because we're, because we're all facing being the same family perhaps, just, uh, do as we can. Mr. Porlock, is that our, is, okay, somebody, we got a motion to do all that, is there a second?
I'd say.
Got a motion and a second. Mr. Phillips, how do you vote?
Yes.
Chairperson, yes, Mr. Porlock, yes, that's right, Ridenberg?
Yes.
Okay.
I think that's all I have.
Okay. The one that's, uh, council, I don't, I started to do first, but that's important, you're, you're the.
No, I don't have anything. Mr. Ridenberg?
Um, I don't have anything either.
Mr. Phillips?
Uh, no, I just want to comment, I, again, appreciate the collections and, uh. Just really do want to call out Phillip and, um, Miss Gothard, the, this water collection thing, they really pushed hard on it. I know Miss Ridenberg has wanted this for a long time and.
Yeah.
All you've had, uh, John sitting right here, he'd be happy, uh, cause that was one thing that always hooked him along. So I, I just really appreciate them pushing through on that, cause it, it took some pushing there.
It did.
And some initiative.
I don't remember the last time we had Ziegler outstanding. Uh, Morrissey started doing that and, uh, uh, Ms. Kim and Ms. Lynn just really pushed it to the finish line and that, that's great.
I don't remember ever meeting Ziegler since I've been on the.
I feel like maybe you set far too high though now. That's okay, we can.
That we expected, that we expected though.
But. I might've combined those two conversations. The second part of it was, uh, being able to sell potable water. Took a lot of effort, um, and again, that was an issue that was, I mean, I, I, you know, as I watched the county, the town before I, the year before I came on, that was always a point of conversation, seemed to be of, uh, so I appreciated them pushing through on that and us being able to see the other side of that.
Sometimes potential conversation.
Yes. So I appreciate, uh, all of y'all pushing through and we finally got to see that.
That's good, we got a good staff.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, Mr. Carter's not here. Uh, on the update on the fire department merger, you was at a meeting, we need to talk about that. Does everybody kind of know where we are or remember what we voted on last month? I think, did, did you go?
I did.
You went to the meeting today, didn't you? You didn't go today?
I did go.
Okay. Tell them.
Basically, it was on the consent agenda that they just gave the county, uh, permission to start the process. Basically the same thing that we had given our attorney, they gave their attorney the, um, permission to begin the process. So what should happen now is according to Jeff, uh, those two attorneys will get together and create a document and then they will, both of them, Jeff will come back to us and then he'll go back to the county and begin the negotiation process.
The couple of things we talked about tonight, I don't remember that's something we gave to them, would we be able to, uh, would Jeff maybe give us an update of how negotiations is going and can we add those to his list before we actually start negotiating?
I did, I, I did send him the list that y'all wanted them to be able to still participate in city functions. What was the other thing that you were, what's your?
Keep the name.
Keep the name, I told them that.
And, uh, make sure that.
The verbal. Yeah. All those, those were the things I think I sent to the list.
Yeah.
If there's something else, if y'all let me know.
Now, when we, when we do this, uh, merger, uh, the county then becomes responsible for our fire department, our, our fire flukes have been on.
Your fire, our fire what?
Our fire plugs, our fire hydrants.
Yeah. We, we still have to report to Water Management, DEP about fire hydrant flushings, but like in, in, Al in Sunny Hills just gets them from US Water, so I'm hoping I'll just be able to get them from the fire department, we won't have to go do them on our own.
Yeah. Well, they, uh, well, if it's, if it's fire department, they should do it. We may have to fill in the blanks or something.
But they've, they've got paid guys now, they can, they're on, you know, they're on it.
Yeah.
That's gonna be good. That's gonna be good, that's good. We got fire, fire plugs, we don't even got more.
Oh, we've got located now.
Oh, do you?
Yeah, we do.
And so we're gonna have one on GPS?
We don't have GPS when he gets that computer.
I like that. The fire plugs become their, their responsibility, but getting them where it is still ours. That's all I have. Anybody in the audience that hasn't spoken that wants to? Mr. Houston, thank you again for being here.
Yes, sir, thank you very much. I really appreciate it.
Big mail or something. Will Stander, sir?